Good evening. My name is Dr. Ron Daniels. I'm a member of the National African American Reparations Commission, but more importantly, I am a member of the National African American Reparations Commission. And along with First Repair under the able visionary leadership of Robin Rue Simmons, we are convening this global town hall meeting tonight. How are you all feeling? And I am telling the world, we are in Evanston, Illinois, the epicenter of the global reparations movement, and we are having a glorious time. And for all of you who are viewing all across the world, we want you to participate and be a part of this. And we're going to get started with one of the great pastors, not only in Evanston, but one of the great pastors in this country. He is also, he is the senior pastor here at Second Baptist Church. This is a historic church. It's Reverend Dr. Michael Nevis. He's also the president of the North Shore NAACP, but he is an incredible, let me just say, he a mad brother. Would you please come and provide our invocation and remarks?
Let me say first of all, good evening to everybody and welcome to Second Baptist Church. We are among the oldest and boldest African-American congregations on the North Shore. There are two African-American congregations that recently celebrated their 141st year, and we are among them. So we're happy to be here. We've been on this spot, on this corner, since 1915, and we are just excited to be here. This is an amazing moment. It's a revolutionary moment. It is a dynamic moment. It is what Germans call a zeticus moment, a moment where the spirit of God and time comes together to create an amazing moment. We also call it Kairos in Greek. So we're excited to have you all present and to have you available. And I want you to know that you need to know, this really is an amazing moment. We welcome you into this space, but we want you to know that just a few years ago, we were around the corner at First Church of God. And that was the moment when we had our first town hall meeting announcing that the Evanston City Council actually passed Resolution 126 for reparations in the city of Evanston. You would think that was the first great moment that black folks got together, but I want you all to know, that wasn't the first great moment. We have had great moments in history where our folks have come together. Another great moment was at Niagara Falls in 1909, when a group of folks came together and decided that they would start the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. They call themselves the oldest and the boldest, the longest and the strongest civil rights organization in the history of the United States of America. You would think that the NAACP founding was actually the very first. It wasn't the first. Before then, we had some amazing folks. We had folks right around that same time, a few years later. We had a Jamaican brother who came up from Kingston and decided to land in New York City. He landed in New York City, and two years later, he started the United Negro Improvement Association, and that was Marcus Garvey. We've had great moments in our history. It didn't just start there, it goes back further. You can go all the way back to 1831, when a young brother named David Walker decided that he would write an amazing appeal called "An Appeal to Colored Citizens of the United States of America," telling white churches in 1831 that if you do not immediately cease and desist slavery, then the judgment of God will come down upon you and upon yours. In 1831, that was David T. Walker. So he was found dead a year later, amen. But keep in mind, we have someone else who said that a person isn't fit to live if they haven't found something worth dying for. And so we want to welcome you, and I think I'm supposed to give the prayer as well. Amen. 1804, we gotta remember 1804, when there were a group just south of Florida in a place called Haiti, who decided enough is enough. They decided, we are gonna shift this movement, we're gonna shift the atmosphere, and they let the French know on the island of Haiti, you are no longer welcome in our home. And they said goodbye. So we thank God for Toussaint L. Overtour. We thank God for Henry Christopher. We thank God for those amazing Haitians who led the way. We are a people who have had a Kairos moment from the time we entered into the Western Hemisphere. So you need to know, this is another Kairos moment. Do not think that you've come here just thinking, we're gonna learn more about reparations where you are. We've got the most splendid people in the country who are gonna teach us about reparations in this panel discussion tonight. But if you leave this place without having felt the power of the Spirit to take with you back to wherever you are, to know that you can make a change, then you have come to the wrong place tonight. You have to leave here with power, because you came here with power. And if you came here with power, all of the individuals who are here, just imagine the seismic power that you will leave with when you leave these doors tonight. You are powerful, you are beautiful, you are black, you are amazing, you are extraordinary, you are wonderful. Stand up and give yourselves a round of applause. Act like you know somebody. That's who you are. That's where you come from. And oh Lord, bless this proceeding, amen.
Well, let the church say amen. Now Reverend, when you open the doors of the church, and I'm from, you know, a church in New York, but I'm gonna become an honorary member here, all right? And by the way, there's a movie out called Napoleon, but I don't think they're gonna show the scene about how Napoleon was jammed up by the Haitian revolutionaries either. As we begin this program, it is extraordinarily important that we always have an ancestral acknowledgement. And here in Evanston, they have kind of paved the way in drafting and crafting and emphasizing the importance of saying. So it's now my privilege to bring to the rostrum for the ancestral acknowledgement, Ms. Bonnie Lockhart. I understand she is a committee woman in this glorious city of Evanston, Illinois. Give her a big round of applause.
Good evening. Our ancestral acknowledgement as so. With great humility and deep gratitude, we honor the strength, endurance, and sacrifice of our black ancestors. We honor those enslaved African people whose forced labor was exploited for generations to help establish the economy of our region and the United States. We honor those black ancestors who persevered despite the discriminatory laws and practices that created a racial caste system, legitimized anti-black racism, and continue to plague our communities today. It is only by recognition and understanding of these eras begun during our nation's origins and continuing today that we can hope to correct our path. We acknowledge this exploitation of not only mines and labor, but of our humanity. We grieve for those black ancestors who, despite their contributions to this city's wealth and freedom, were never recognized, fairly compensated, nor allowed to fully realize their own sovereignty. Because of their work, we are here, and we will invest in the descendants of this legacy. And through this process, we work to repair some of the harms done by public and private actors. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now would you please rise as we bring to the rostrum for the Black National Anthem, Ms. Tina Pinnick, who's going to lead us, and we are going to follow her glorious voice.
Lift every voice and sing till the heaven ring. Ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the lifting skies. Let us resound loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the hope that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the faith that the presence has taught us. Facing the rising sun of the new day. Let us march on to victory is won. Stony the road we trod, bitter the churning rod. How tender days when hope, our born and died, yet with a steady beat and a weary beat, come to a place on which all the side. We have come over a way where our tears and the war that we've heard. We have come treading the path through the blood and the sorrow. Out of the gloomy past till the we stand at last, where the white green of our star is cast. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears. Thou who hast brought us, are on our way. Thou who hast bought thy light, led us into the light. Keep us forever in thy path, we pray. Last our feet stray from the place where our God, where we met thee. Last our heart drop from the wine, from the blood we forget of thee. Settled beneath thy hand, may we forever stand, true to our God, true to our native land.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pinnick. Thank you so much. James Weldon Johnson penned that. One of the early leaders of the NAACP indeed. And really, really, I remember as a much younger person, I cut my teeth really in the NAACP. And we learned that song, but later on, when you really focus on each of those verses, they are remarkably strong and powerful in terms of the black freedom struggle and what we have gone through. So it is an incredible anthem. And now we bring for remarks our Lester's leader, the person who has stepped out to help shape a indeed incredible moment in the history of this country and the history of the world. One doesn't often know when or how leaders are born and what their contributions will be, or how significant they will be. But I've worked on reparations for all of my adult life. I was mentored by Queen Mother Moore, literally. And I did really never believe, I mean, I had, you know, I mean, I knew we were gonna get there, but I would never have believed that we would be where we are now. Reparations are surging all over the world. And the epicenter of that is right here in Evanston, Illinois. I will never forget, and there were many of us with the National African American Reparations Commission who were waiting and monitoring, because you know, we had a role in the certification and all that, but as each step took place, and then when the vote was finally taken, I mean, calls did just come in from the United States of America, because I had to answer some of those calls, I was glad to do it. They came in from all over the world, everywhere, Japan, India, South Africa, about Evanston, Illinois, and what had happened because of the leadership and the humility and the courage and the kindness of Robin Rue Simmons.
Grace and Peace Movement family, how are you tonight? Are you good? Have we had a good time the last couple of days? Yes, yes, yes. How grateful I am to be here with you tonight and welcome you to my city and to my extended family home, Second Baptist. Welcome to Evanston. Thank you for taking the time to join together for us to continue the fight for reparations. I'm full, as you all may imagine. We've had an incredible couple of days of reparations programming, unity, inspiration and healing, and this town hall should be a very high moment in what has been our third annual symposium. How many of you are returning for a second or a third symposium in Evanston, Illinois? We want to thank you all for your commitment in coming to Evanston. And as an Evanstonian, as a daughter of Evanston, as a 5th Ward resident, before I go any further, I want to make sure my alderman isn't here. Is my alderman here? I know he was en route. I want to bring greetings from the city of Evanston, from the 5th Ward, from the reparations committee. Bonnie, if you could join me, if there are any other reparations committee members, if you could join me up here. Our work is only done with the support and encouragement and education and mentoring and nurturing of so many of you that are here and that are watching virtually, our leaders that are on the dais, and so many that have supported this work. I want to use my privilege to actually share the rest of my time with one of my mentors, who you hear me talk about all the time, Judge Lionel Jean Baptiste. If you could make your way up here, please. Thank you. Thank you. So our work was made possible because we could lean on a 2002 reparations resolution that doesn't get lifted up enough. We said yes to reparations in 2019 by Ray of Resolution 126R19, but in 2002, the city of Evanston, led by this great man, said yes to reparations with a resolution that called to action H.R. 40 in Congress, as well as some other recommendations to our school boards and so on. And so since we're here in Evanston and we're right across from the library, I want to take this moment for Judge Lionel Jean Baptiste to make sure everyone is aware of a very important monument that is across the street from the hotel in which we're convening in. And I will step aside so that we can learn more about it, its purpose, and why you should go take a picture of it and tell all your friends and family about it. But I just want to close with saying, I love you all, I thank you all for being here. Keep the fight up. Remember the words of encouragement I gave you from my personal elders' counter, reparations now, reparations now, reparations now.
Robin is at the cutting edge, and she is where she is because we have been where we have had to be. Our ancestors put in us the determination, the faith, the hope for a brighter day. And so she's manifesting, she's doing the work, and we are doing the work. So we have to understand that each of us matter, and we have to, wherever we go, we have to raise high the banner of our ancestors and make sure that we put in the work, because that's how you get it done. It's not just talk. She mentioned the monument that you see across from the hotel. That's the monument of Jean Baptiste Point du Sabre. And I had said to folks before that since my name is Lionel Jean Baptiste, no one claimed that I'm not related, so I'm claiming it. So, that's what time it is. Jean Baptiste Point du Sabre was a pioneer, an entrepreneur, a man of peace, a man of vision, who came into this country from St. Mark, Haiti. And he traveled through the Caribbean, through Central America, through the Mississippi River, and came to the Midwest, where he met with community of Native people. But unlike the other new individuals who came into the midst and found these Native American folks, unlike those folks, he embraced them, integrated into their lives. He married Kiti Hawa. His wife was Native American person, built a family. He built a center for commerce and traded with a number of entities and established peace and tranquility and viability and progress. And so for the longest, and we've claimed him as the founder of the city of Chicago, but for the longest, a number of other people had, who had claimed that Egypt was not in Africa, who had claimed that Cleopatra was not African, they had claimed that Jean Baptiste Point du Sabre was French, he was Canadian. So like everything else, folks, we had to fight to reclaim our brother. He is from Haiti, and he embodied the humanity of his African-ness. That's why he was able to integrate, share, and build communities, as opposed to destroying, killing, and discovering and taking over. So for the longest, we've had to fight to reclaim the legacy of Jean Baptiste Point du Sabre. A number of others had been, had stepped up ahead of us. They established a museum of Jean Baptiste Point du Sabre, there's a school, there are other entities. But we had to fight those who would claim him as their own versus our own. So up until today, we continue to organize through an entity called the Du Sabre Heritage Association, where we celebrate every year, we bring people together. Right now, we building, we fighting to get a park near Navy Pier for Du Sabre, and we trying to get the city to recognize him to such an extent as declaring a Du Sabre Day, so that we could celebrate his birthday and share his history and try to move forward. This bus that you saw is a replica of a lot, although smaller piece, but his bust, that Haitian brother, an entrepreneur like him, had pulled $100,000 out of his pocket and created this bus and donated it to the city of Chicago, so that they can recognize it, they can begin to see an image of Jean Baptiste Point du Sabre. So that's who he is. Take pictures, share the information, and continue to promote the fight for the total recognition of all the contribution of our people and fight for reparations. Thank you.
Another round of applause for Judge Lionel Jean Baptiste. Okay, now, we want to have a conversation with these folks who've gathered here to share perspectives on reparations, and the way we're gonna conduct this is, we'll have a bit of time for a conversation, but then we're gonna bring Robin back for a Q and A period, because there may be folks from around the country, but particularly from here in Evanston, who may have specific questions that maybe you didn't get a chance to answer or have answered in an earlier session or whatever. And so we want to take advantage of that time for people to ask questions and have an exchange with Robin, who has done, he has just such an incredible job with so many stakeholders. In fact, as Robin also points out, and we agree, it's not just her, obviously, she could not do this by herself. It is all the wonderful stakeholders from all the different sectors in Evanston who have made this possible. Let's give Evanston, Illinois, a big round of applause. So now let me introduce our panelists, and then we're gonna get right into the conversation so they can sort of wave their hands. I think it may be difficult for you all to stand right now, I won't ask you to do that. But we have our first panelist, I'd like to introduce, is Ms. Lolita Davis Mathis. She's the chairperson of the Jamaica Reparations Commission, all the way from Kingston, Jamaica. Wave that. All right. I'm from the city of New York these days, and I'm honored to have the person who's leading the effort to, California was first, and you know, they kind of beat us, but we coming right behind them. The person leading the charge is Senator, State Senator James Sanders, and he is from Queens, New York. Next, I'd like to introduce, oh, by the way, we had hoped, Ariva Martin. Many of you know Ariva Martin, you see her on television all the time, a noted human rights lawyer. She could not be here, because last year, you remember, she told us about Palm Springs. So maybe we'll ask, you know, Dr. Malvoe to comment about that as well, but Ariva Martin is not, is not here unfortunately. But all the way from Atlanta, the capital for black people in the South, of course, you know, you can't beat Harlem, you'll never replace Harlem, but you know, man, that's pretty chilly, you know, it's pretty cool. Really had an opportunity to work with her on a remarkable initiative that she's gonna share with you, Dr. Sheila Fleming, is the co-chair of the Social Action Committee for the Atlanta chapter of DSD, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. And then we have Jessica Ann Mitchell. She's the founder and director of the National Cultural Information Trust, and she hails from Washington, DC. And next we have, she needs no introduction. She's sassy, she's brash, she's brilliant. That's the most important part. She's brilliant, because she couldn't get away with, she couldn't get away with the rest of it if she weren't brilliant. She's none other than the president emeritus of Bennett College for Women. Welcome, Dr. Julianne Malvoe. And last but not least, and he's no stranger certainly to Evanston, Illinois, he's come back and forth many, 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 many times to help do the work here. Former national co-chair of NCOB, the National Coalition for Blacks Reparations in America, but now the executive director of First Repair...
Reparations United?
Reparations, what did I say?
First.
Oh Lord, how mercy, I got referred, she got me in my head. Reparations United, and that is none other than Cam Howard, right here in Chicago. Did I get everybody?
Yeah.
All right, okay. When you get old like this, you know, you may have a senior, senior, senior moment. All right, let's get right into the conversation. And I'd like to start with Ms. Lolita Mathis. And my question to you is, during our first town hall meeting, you may recall, some of you may recall, all the way from Guyana, we had a brother who came to be with us, he's the brother Eric Phillips, and that was very exciting, you know, to have people come from all around the world. And so we're glad that you're here to join us, and it's quite exciting and affirming. But please tell us what brings you to Evanston, and share some of the work that you're doing with the Jamaica Reparations Commission, if you would.
Well, thank you. Well, first let me say, this is my first time in Chicago.
I think we need to get your microphone up a little louder. Let's see. I think we need to get your microphone up a little louder, let's see.
You're not hearing?
Just go ahead and try it again.
Yes, I was saying, thank you. This is my first time in Chicago, and of course, my first time in Evanston. Thank you very much for having me, and I have been enjoying it since I arrived two days ago. So, also, before I tell you a little bit about what we have doing in Jamaica, I just want to say, what a place to have a meeting like this, in the house of God. And I say that because, for those of us who are gathered here, the essence of equality is embodied in the word of God. And it was the boy who said slavery broke the world in half, and that repair is not only repaired to the victim, but also repaired to the perpetrators as well. And I think when we think of reparation, we need to think of reparation within that context. It's not only about the victims, because we have all been hurt by what has been the worst type of human treatment ever recorded in our history of the world. So in Jamaica, and for those of you who, has anybody here been to Jamaica? Wow, great, one of the most wonderful places to have a holiday as well. So, in Jamaica, the government of Jamaica, and by government, we mean both sides of the House. We have a British parliamentary system, so we have a parliament like the British. And so there are two ruling political parties, one is always in power, the other is the opposition. Both parties in 2009 came together and decided that as a country, that this country should pursue reparation, primarily from the British. And so, the government established the National Commission on Reparation. The task of the commission, now named a council, is to advise the government of Jamaica on the path to reparation. CARICOM, as a regional group, also came together with all the governments in CARICOM and established a CARICOM Reparation Commission. So from a regional perspective, all Caribbean countries are defining the path to reparation as a regional perspective and from the national perspectives. Every Caribbean island in the English-speaking Caribbean has a National Reparation Commission or Council. And even those islands that are still dependencies, because we still have islands in the Caribbean that are not independent nations, they are now calling on the European nations that they are connected to, to give them their independence as part of the reparation program. So, we are embarking on a journey, or have embarked on a journey, that has no end, and I'm gonna tell you why it has no end. Because the enslavement of Africans took over 300 years. And out of that 300 years of chattelization of a people, the perceived destruction of cultural heritage, the destruction of families, et cetera, we still ended up with nations that still are connected, as well as still have retained our cultural forms. So in essence, what Jamaica is doing, we are also looking at, apart from reparation from the colonizers, we are looking internally as a country to see what have we done among ourselves that would have perpetuated what the colonizers would have intended. So we are looking internally, because we're looking at internal repair. And in looking at internal repair, we are focusing on a number of areas. We're looking at what are the damages, and by the way, the damages are consistent globally, our context may be different, but we all came from the same place, we were all taken, stolen, chattelized, et cetera, but we ended up in different places. So in terms of our educational program, we are really focused on retelling our own story. We are not making it up. But as one of our speakers said, you know who tells the story? If it's a hunter, the hunter will tell the story. And so we are telling our own stories, and we are telling our children their story. And what is the story? The story is that our history did not begin when we ended up on the slave ships. That's not where our history began. Our history began in a, on a continent, in different places on a continent, where people were actually happy, there were families, there was commerce, there was industry, there was life, there was philosophy, there was science. So there was life on the continent of Africa before we were taken here. That part of our story is not told. So we are telling our children their story. And in telling the story, we are also including all the atrocities that were committed on us as a people. And we are incorporating that in the curriculum. And that doesn't mean we are creating new subject areas either. We are saying, it doesn't matter what subject you teach, and we are not turning our lecturers or teachers into historians either. We are incorporating the story in the various subject areas, that's one area. Our National Commission also has different committees, subcommittees. So for example, there's a legal subcommittee, that committee is looking at the legal path toward reparation. We have international relations, we have a church committee, and our church committee is engaging with churches within Jamaica, within the Caribbean, and globally, towards the path to reparatory justice. And so then we also have, you know, public relations, et cetera. We just completed a draft text for 100 facts about reparation, so we are also educating our people generally about this subject. I'm gonna stop here, because I know that the panel needs the opportunity to speak as well, but I just wanted to close to say that reparatory justice is an intergenerational issue. It's not a 10-year issue, it's not a 50-year issue, and we don't necessarily think that way, because we think in tranches, we may think in five and 10 years. But if it took us over 300 years of survival, and we have ended up with all these harm and hurts, whatever we want to call it, it simply means that we won't do a repair in 10 years. So we, who are here today, need to understand very clearly that we are in a privileged position. We are negotiating for the generations yet unborn, and we have to know what we are doing. So in other words, we can't negotiate today or tomorrow. And as lawyers would say, we sign a release and discharge, it doesn't work that way. We can't sign a release and discharge, because the generations to come must never be in the position that we're in today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Well, Senator Sanders, you have to close the race here. I don't know how, why you allowed California to be first, but now you in charge, so, but on the serious side, there is serious progress being made in the state of New York, and that's gonna be a great moment. So can you just give us a little sense of the challenges and twists and turns, but most importantly, when is it gonna happen?
I was hoping you'd tell me. Well, let me, let me start by doing three things, I'm just gonna do three. I'm going to do some paying homage, I'm going to teach you Mandarin Chinese, I'm going to speak of the greatest danger that we have, and then I'm gonna hand the mic. We would be remiss if we did not point out that New York is a, is a great place, but we have to pay homage to this town, which has brought all of us together, and the great leaders that have done that. And if you could make New York pay homage, then you really, you've done it up, and you all have done it up. I congratulate you. I also would be remiss if, if I did not, there's, I'm gonna tell you the secret of all of this, but I don't want you to tell anybody, that we are merely following the guidelines that Dr. Daniels and the Nationals, that your great organization has put together. We, we're just on your shoulders. All we're doing is trying to, trying to do what you've already told us to do, and trying to not mess it up so much. We'll, we'll see how successful we are. Mandarin Chinese, now, I'm gonna do this, I'm going to say that we find ourselves in a strange place, and in Mandarin Chinese, they don't have a word for crisis, matter of fact, they don't use words, they use symbols. They don't have a word for crisis, they use two symbols, danger and opportunity. So in Mandarin Chinese, a crisis is a dangerous opportunity. And that's where we find ourselves in the world and in New York. We are in a dangerous opportunity. You look at the Supreme Court, and you look at your, so who was that that said President Trump? How, how dare you? I like it. So under those conditions, that was, it really, I mean, I, I'm gonna say I did it. So we find ourselves in a strange place, and we find ourselves in that place in New York too. And I would argue that, that we are about to do something amazing, because as the saying is, so goes New York, so goes the nation. If we could move this thing at the state level and do it right, then we've done something. And our major danger, Dr. Davis, and all the doctors up here, is what I would consider political maturity. Political maturity. Can we learn to differ without becoming disagreeable? Can we figure out how not to demonize each other, especially those that we don't like, that we don't agree with? I would argue that from one coast to the next coast, that is the greatest danger of the leaders that, who just say, I don't like this one, and I'm not gonna get, I'm just not gonna go along with it. And it's really a danger to the movement that we find ourselves. I trust that this is not the situation in Jamaica, I trust that y'all find yourselves at a far more politically mature place. But we have to really do those things. Now, to answer your question directly, sir, if, you know, if it's God's will, by the end of this week, we will know which way we're going in New York, and it will be an amazing thing. There are many pitfalls, there are many dangers, but if I was a betting man, and I wouldn't bet in a church, but if I was, although it may be lucky, if I was a betting man, I would bet, I'd be 85% sure that we're about to do something amazing in New York by the, by the end of this week, we will, will know. So I will stop there, I'm already betting in a church and teaching Chinese, so I think that's enough for the moment. I'll pass the mic.
Senator Sanders, well, let me just quickly say that...
I knew he wasn't gonna let me go.
No, 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 but, but I think it's important for people to know that in the state of New York, I mean, for many, many years, it was difficult, because the Democrats only controlled the lower House.
Yes.
But now, and you were in the Senate, and so you couldn't take any leadership, because you were in the Senate. But now, the Democrats control both Houses and have the governor.
Yes.
And it has, and it has, and New York is remarkable, you might want to say about that, worried about the leadership, because, you know, about the leadership of both Houses. So say a little bit about that.
Your, your leadership is one that I follow again, sir. New York finds itself in a, in a unique place. We have a supermajority in the Assembly, which means that we have so many Democrats, that it doesn't matter what you are, whatever else you are. You could be whatever you wish, you be five of them, it won't make a difference. Now you have a supermajority in the Senate, now this is really, the Republicans controlled the Senate in the state of New York for 40 years. And not only have we, we done it, but a black woman led us into the majority, and then into the supermajority. Andrea Stewart-Cousins, an incredible talented woman, you would, you would do well to learn of her. But we also have a supermajority in the Assembly under a black man called Hasty, the Speaker of the Assembly. Now, the governor is a Democrat, and she almost lost her race. And without the black vote, she would not have had that seat. So under those conditions, we find ourselves in, in a place where we actually may be able to do something and have it upheld. So what we do becomes really critical, all of the stars are aligned, and it really is up to us to see this thing through. Thank you for reminding me of that, sir.
Well, thank you very much. And let me just say quickly, because the presentation, such amazing presentations all day, but our brother and, is it Tillery? Tillery. It, it's, it's very interesting, because the dilemma is the same thing in New York. You have certain parties shaking in their boots about what's gonna happen with the, you know, with the other folk, right? And so it's interesting how that plays itself out, even in a state like New York. So it's been an effort to try to persuade the, the heard head person, I won't even mention, that this is gonna be all right. And so we've had to just sort of hold hands and pull her across the finish line. And we're praying, as you said before, we'll have some good news. Thank you very much, Senator Sanders, we'll be back to you with another round. And so now, DST, who is DST in the Divine Nine? How y'all up in the reparations movement? What is all this? Of course, now, then I thought, oh, there's Malvoe, she gonna jump on me too, right?
At best.
Yeah. But anyway, Dr. Sheila Fleming, talk to us about the work that's being done in Atlanta, and why is it really that the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority is even involved in this fight?
Well, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, first, I want to pay homage as well to the leadership of this church, and your vision and desire to make a difference in your community, and of course, our shero, Robin, you had a lot to do with, with what's happening in Atlanta. And we could not have done and be where we are without you, Dr. Daniels. What you said earlier about Dr. Daniels and NARC shepherding and being there to help us, we could not have been where we are today without what you, he came, he did everything at his own expense. I just don't think we could have been where we are without him. Thank you so much. Let me just say this first, because Atlanta is known, and Dr. Daniels mentioned, the Black Mecca. He said Mecca of the South, but we just think of America. Anyway, but, and Atlanta is my favorite place in the world. I've lived many places, and I always come back to Atlanta. But let me just tell you some things about Atlanta that you may not know, and I'm gonna read these, because they are stats that I think you need to know. And as I said, it's considered the Black Mecca. Nearly 30% of Black Atlantans live below the poverty line. 80% of Atlanta's black children, whom I love, live in communities with high concentrations of poverty, compared with only 6% of their white peers. The current unemployment rate, and this was last year, with Black Atlantans, is 22%, nearly twice the city's overall 13%. Atlanta is the number one city for income inequality in America. The same place that we think is the Black Mecca. And in fact, if a person is born in poverty in Atlanta, that person only has 4% chance of escaping poverty in their lifetime. And the racial gap is more glaring. The annual median household income for a white family is more than $83,000, compared to $28,000 for a black family. The average black-owned business is valued at $58,000, and guess what it is for white businesses? So I say this to you, because I love Atlanta, but this whole idea of Chinese and thinking dangerous opportunities is there with us in Atlanta, and it may be a different kind. Some of you know about the Divine Nine, how many of you are members of Divine Nine in this audience? All right, all right, we must, I do that for a reason, you'll learn in a minute. All those who are saying yay, so you ready for, to do this?
All right.
It is time for the Divine Nine to stand up for reparations. That's the bottom line. That's, that's, that, that is where we are going. And this visionary man, here I am... And this visionary man, here I am, in my chapter in Atlanta, some of you don't know, but, well, Delta was founded in nineteen thirty-two, thirteen at Howard University, I don't know why I said thirty-two, thirteen at Howard University, we have more than three hundred and fifty thousand members. Not members, what we call them, pledged members, some not active, but once agreed, always, right? And we are organized in such a way, we began in nineteen thirteen at the Women's March in Washington, when white women refused to allow us to march, we decided we were gonna march anyway. And so that is how we started, out in the streets of Washington, for our community and especially for black women's rights to vote. So we've always been social activists. Our major efforts are around our social action. We have education, our scholarships, all of that as well, but social action is what we are known for. And our chapter in Atlanta, nearly eight hundred women, and we are only one of nine chapters in the Atlanta metro area. We have seen what I just read for many years, and we've been out there working in this field. And the leadership in our organization saw what was happening with reparations around the country, particularly in Evanston. We couldn't have been more proud that a sister did what she did in her leadership. We respect and know that leadership has support, and you didn't do it alone. But you were brave and courageous to step out there, and we were inspired by that. And as a result, we took a resolution to our national convention in Atlanta in nineteen, in twenty-twenty-one, and asked the national body to endorse this resolution that we will educate and advocate for reparations in our community and throughout the world. And so we wanted to have legislation, because that's how we are. Because we asked, can we do something about reparations? No, because that's not anywhere we're gonna put it here then. And we have to be ready to do that. Where it does not exist, like our sister Shirley Children said, bring, if there's no table, bring the table, no chair, bring the chair. So we decided to ask our national body to take a stand, and they did unanimously. Voted for our, our resolution. And the resolution includes first and foremost, the support of HR Forty. And we educate in that resolution about what it was and how Conyers in nineteen eighty-nine started this. And it's time for us, reparations now. That is what, when we, we learned all of, we taught our, you know, sisters about this. So, long story short, after that, we, in our chapter, our social action committee, I was co-chair of the committee, went, we, we decided that we were gonna do something, so we began to educate our community. We had workshops, we had Zoom meetings, offering to our community, partnering with organizations. Actually, reparations commission had already been formed in Fulton County. I want to recognize my brother Marcus Coleman. He is the co-chair of the Fulton County Reparations Commission with Dr. Sims Avarado. So they were models for us as well. We didn't know it, it's been a well-kept secret, that's a whole nother story. Yes, it's, well, however, we wanted the community, because as Deltas, it's important for us to educate. Like you said, political, the political, we have to make sure that our community understands what it means when we say reparations. And to ensure, and this is the most important part, that repair and healing are part of that discussion. So we had education in our communities, we had Zoom meetings, all of that. And one of which, we asked Dr. Daniels to come. Doctor, Councilman Bond, I see you standing up. Councilman Bond, Michael Julian Bond, you might know the name Julian Bond, this is his son, who's in the city council. He served as a moderator for one of Delta's workshops for the community. And at that workshop, he committed to introducing legislation to establish a commission to study reparations. I'm here to tell you tonight, it was passed November fourth. What, less than a month ago, at the, at the beginning of that. So we have established the commission, it is, well, it hasn't been established, the legislation has been passed, and the appointments will occur in two thousand twenty-four.
All right, okay, big hand for Atlanta, on the move. And I'm talking about. Okay. Our next presenter is Jessica Ann Mitchell, we call her Jam. And she, we've already introduced her, but you have been doing some amazing work. You have been monitoring and serving as a resource person, looking at local and, local efforts and state efforts all over the country. And you've just been doing all the research in California, being back and forth, New York. She was, you know, I'm on the commission, she's, but you know what's happening in New York? This is happening, these certain things are moving in certain ways and whatnot. So she's an amazing, among other things, a publicist, PR person, tremendous researcher, and she's been dedicated to really developing an understanding of how reparations might be developing. And so one of the controversies or one of the issues that is, one of the controversies, that controversial questions has been, the issue of, of how should we view eligibility? How should we review the whole question of repair? And so I'm wondering whether you would just respond to that in terms of some of the work that you've done and some of the conclusions that you've arrived to at?
Sure, first, I want to say thank you, Dr. Daniels, for all the tremendous work that you have done and for laying the, the groundwork and, and really putting everything into motion. Thank you to Robin Rue Simmons, thank you to the city of Evanston for being the leaders that you are in the reparations movement. First of all, when it comes to eligibility, it is a very important question. Eligibility is determined by the harm. But first, we have to understand that there is more than one era of harm. The first era of harm is the transatlantic slave trade and chattel slavery. Then the second era of harm is Jim Crow, AKA the US apartheid system. And then the third era of harm would be modern-day systemic racism. That might even include the war on drugs and the impact that that had on black communities. We are facing a very aggressive anti-reparations media campaign that seeks to disconnect the histories of those eras. The sister from Jamaica said earlier that this is an intergenerational struggle. So when we're going into the battlefield on reparations, it's very important to draw that connection. It's very important to say, yes, we are, we are dealing with the vestiges of chattel slavery. Chattel slavery is one of, is the original harm. But the vestiges of chattel slavery continue to harm us today. What is being said, and I'm gonna talk about this more tomorrow in the Live Toolkit, what is being said across right-wing media, and these are paid ad campaigns. This is not just people talking. This is very targeted paid campaigns that are saying things like, well, black Americans, they want reparations and they were never slaves. The, the current ones, you, you weren't a slave, or black Americans are trying to penalize innocent white folk that were never enslavers. And they try to limit the era of harm to enslavement and disconnect the harms that happened to our ancestors and say, well, you never struggled like they struggled, and it's too- I'm a descendant of enslaved Africans and sharecroppers. My ancestors literally escaped off of a plantation in Warren, Georgia, and had to run to Augusta, Georgia for their lives. And my other ancestors are Gullah Geechee, coming out of Georgetown in South Carolina and raised up in Florence, South Carolina. It's very important to draw the connection. Over forty percent of African-Americans are descendants of Africans that came in through Charleston, South Carolina, and then were dispersed, dispersed throughout the United States of America and even other parts of the Americas. That original harm, the harm of making our ancestors be chattel, the harm of breeding our ancestors and selling off their children and their offspring, the harm of disconnecting our families, the harm of keeping us away from having housing, the harm of disposing of elderly enslaved Africans off into the wilderness to fend for themselves. All of that is connected to the harms that we face today. But we have to draw that connection. If we don't draw that connection, it, 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 it means that we are missing out on the history of what has happened, but it also impacts what happens to us today and future generations that are gonna have to continue on this fight.
I didn't even have to stand up on that one. Excellent, 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 and again, that discussion will be ongoing, but this is one of the key issues that we're working through. Now to Dr. Julianne Malvo. Dr. J, as we call her, you've done a great deal of, spent a great deal of time educating black Americans, Americans in general, about the tragic impact of white economic envy on destroying black communities. In fact, you're writing a, a book about it, and we're waiting for it. So first, would you give us a couple of examples of white economic envy and its deadly impact? And secondly, when can we expect the book?
Well, well, first of all, thank you, Dr. D, of course, Sister Robin, all praises, all praises. I'm really very grateful for the step you took out. My Haitian brother, yeah, my maternal grandfather was Haitian, brother Lionel. And of course, our senator here, my brother man here, our sister from Jamaica. I should go, yeah, soon come, soon come. Last time I went to hotel, they had a water, that's what they told me when I asked for it. Soon come, soon come. That means you ain't getting none. But anyway, let me act like I have good sense, even though I don't. To talk a little bit, I want, let me talk about the book contextually, because that will answer the question about economic envy. The book is called The Lynchin Culture, The Wealth Gap, and Reparations. It will probably be out in early twenty-twenty-five, since I'm still working on it. And it takes, a book is like a baby, once you hand it to the publisher, it takes about nine months for them to get themselves together. But the first chapter of the book talks about the economy that enslavement created. And the economy that enslavement created was an economy that allowed people to treat us, as you say, like chattel. Treat us any kind of way, with no consequences. At the end of enslavement, there were a whole lot of people who did not want to give it up. Chattel, convict lynching in Mississippi started in eighteen sixty-six, one year after the end of enslavement. So they had already tried to figure out, how can we keep these people under our thumb? A lynching culture, the reason I talk about a lynching culture as opposed to just lynching, is because in the nineteen forties, there's a debate among black academics of what a lynching was. And so some of them said you actually had to string somebody up, there had to be a crowd involved. So if a random white man, like I have one case here, where a white man, actually, a brother was lynched because he did not run an errand for a white woman, he did not know. So they just, another brother was lynched for spitting on the sidewalk. Lynching was about keeping control. And when you look at the list of lynchings, and I must recommend, if you all get to Montgomery, Alabama, you must go to that museum. I mean, I don't cry much, I fight a lot, I mean, I had to go into a small room. We start reading about some of the, the damage that was done to our people. You know, I mean, I was at the Library of Congress one time, I spent a lot of time there, and I'm in the back in the stacks, and I was reading about this lynching, it was really gross. I'm not even gonna repeat it, because it's too gross. The brothers will start grabbing themselves, you know, when you read about this particular one. But anyway, I, pastor, in the back of the library, I said, just what I told you, I said, it's a chapel. OGD. And I said it loud, too, because I was just overcome. And the little brother, poor little brother, he's a young brother who graduated from Howard, he's like three years out. And he said he used to be afraid of me. So he came back, he said, Dr. Malvo, you can't curse back here. I said, uh, bro, read this. So he read it, he's an OGD. And some of what happened was gross, but why did it happen? And a lot of it, as Dr. D says, is about economic envy. It's about the fact that, see, if you were made to be less than, then it affects the ego of a white person that you have more than they do. It affects their ego when you're better than they are. Affects the ego when you are doing it and doing it well. I mean, there's a, there's a story, and it's not about a lynching, but almost as they, this brother owned a bank in Richmond, Virginia, but he was bodacious, John Mitchell was his name. First man to have an automobile in Richmond. Used to ride around in fur coats. I mean, he was just a little much for white folks, and for some black folks too. So when, so at the point that he got to be that, they used banking regulations to basically drive him into bankruptcy. But driven into bankruptcy is better than being killed. The first lynching that Ida B. Wells documented was a lynching around a place called a People's Grocery. In the case of the People's Grocery, what had happened was, white, two brothers, three brothers, Tommy Moss, William Stewart, and Calvin McDowell, opened a store to compete with a white man's store. Because the sisters could not go into the white man's store without drama. They, people talked under their clothes, people pushed at them. Plus this man, I, I thought, I wrote his name down, but I probably threw it away because it got on my nerves. It's in my notes somewhere, but anyway, he had ten convictions for selling alcohol. And he still, they never closed him down. So, so guess, so if he's selling alcohol, guess what, they're in his store drinking alcohol, which means drunken people are costing black women who are suddenly trying to buy groceries. So Tommy Moss and his boys, and Tommy was the, the lead one, he was Ida B. Wells' friend, they opened a People's Grocery. And that's, and it was thriving, black folks started going there. And next thing you know, two little boys got in a fight over some marbles. And a white boy ran down to the white man's store and said, the black man took my marbles. And so they went to the People's Grocery with guns, over marbles. Over marbles. And some shots were fired, and a white man got shot. Next thing you know, they came back and lynched all three of those men. All three of them, and the white man got the brother's store for eight cents on the dollar. That was pure economic envy. No, you will not have a black man do better than me. You simply will not, you will die. And that's literally what happened. But there's so many others, as I've been at the Lynching Museum, I, well, let me say this before saying that. The other thing that's interesting, when you look at lynching, of course, the, the trope was that black men were raping white women, which was a lie. There, a brother documented one hundred and seventeen lynchings in nineteen hundred. And of the one hundred and seventeen lynchings, only eighteen had anything to do with sex. And there's no notion, half of those were probably lies. Anytime something happened, I mean, there was one case where a black man walked by a window, and a white woman was bathing, well, she should have put her curtain down there. You know, why are you bathing in the window? I mean, seriously. Anyway, he got lynched because they said he looked in the window. But the interesting about that particular lynching is the brother was also prosperous. So, so now, the question is, did he look in the window, or were they just mad because he had money? So Doc, Dr. D, I've been trying to unpack some of this stuff. It's gonna be very difficult to do, because, you know, I've gone back through archives. NAACP has a, a book they did in, shout out NAACP, in nineteen, whatever. It's called Thirty, Thirty Years of Lynching. And they literally went through and documented many of the lynchings, they did this way back when. Of course, the Lynching Museum has a, a list of many of them, and you walk through and tears start rolling down your face when you see something what happened. Here's eighteen ninety-five in Paris, Texas, is it eighteen ninety-five? No, it's not eighteen ninety-five, it might be nineteen some, it's a, two black, yeah, it is eighteen ninety-five. William Stephens and Jefferson Cole were lynched because they refused to abandon their land to white people. Both of them had land, they were two different guys now. William Stephens, they say, had attitude, whatever that means. Jefferson Cole, in a newspaper article, said he was an unoffensive man, inoffensive man, but very prosperous. Inoffensive, but very prosperous. So they were lynched. So they were lynched. Now, Dr. D, I know you standing up on me, so I just have to tell one more. I know when folks stand up, you know, it's like the polite way of saying, "Shut up." It's all good. Isidore Barnes was a Black man in Arkansas. He was perceived as a very prosperous farmer. He had acres of land that white people wanted. He would not give it up. He left his house one day with money to pay his way. This brother had sharecroppers on his land. So he had money and his rifle. He was found three days later chained to a tree, burned with his rifle. The money was still in his truck. Now, that's not considered a lynching, but it's a part of lynching culture. You could do whatever you want to, to him with no consequence. Nobody was ever, there was no investigation, nobody was ever held responsible, and nobody knows what happened to his land. We know what happened to his land, is, you know, if I get another round, we'll talk about Anthony Crawford. Can I talk about Anthony Crawford, please? I can't talk about Anthony Crawford?
No, 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 we gotta move on.
Alrighty, well, y'all get the, y'all get the gist. What happened was, we created an economy that allowed people to treat Black people like they were nothing. They replicated that economy. There was a very short period of time, almost 2,000 Black men held office between 1866 and 18, like, 80, except, yeah, no, a little bit past that, too, Cam, because, yeah, but that was 12 years reconstructed, but a few still, like South Carolina. They lynched a legislator, cuz he was a legislator. So in any case, after that, that short period of quasi-glory was followed by, literally, until the last known lynching, known official lynching, was in 1859. And then, you know, George Floyd was lynched, all these others, Jamie Byrd was lynched, but they don't count them as lynching. He's gonna take, I got the hook, okay, I got the hook, ask me questions.
But we waiting for the book, we waiting for the book. This is gonna be a very important book, it really is, and we keep encouraging her. And when we do it, we're gonna bring her back here, and maybe we can have the first book signing right here in Evanston, Illinois, cuz this is gonna be an incredible asset. Now we go to Cam Howard. And by now, those of you who have been at the symposium, but also those of you who have seen him recently, know that he is on several missions, but he has a particular mission that he's on big time. And so, Cam, you are one among those who have led the charge. We heard a reference of the Delta Sigma Theta Society passing HR40. I had a conversation with one of the local leaders of the NAACP, was wondering whether or not the NAACP nationally was involved. I said, "Yes, Hillary Shelton has been with us time and time and time again on this." It doesn't really matter, because we are right here at the, at the finish line, but we have not gotten it over the finish line. And so, Cam, would you just sort of summarize where we are with HR40 and the challenges and opportunities that we face in terms of getting this milestone legislation or proposition enacted? Cam Howard?
Sure, Dr. Daniels. And let me also thank and pay homage to our pastor here and all the beautiful people of Evanston, Robin, your leadership, and the leadership of NARC. When we talk about HR40, we have to go to NARC for the current iteration of HR40. In 2015, NARC was established, and at our first meeting, we decided that we would revise HR40. Remove it from a study bill to a remedy bill. Congressman Conyers introduced it in 2017. And in 2019, our current leader, Congresswoman Sheil, recently took over the legislation. And in the first six months, she, she had a historic hearing on HR40, on Juneteenth of 2019, the first hearing, and probably like seven years on the bill. We finished that congressional session with 177 cosponsors. We entered the next congressional session, we didn't get a vote. We entered the next congressional session on the first day the bill was introduced in 2021, in Cobra's leadership, under my direction. We had 117 cosponsors sign on the first day it was introduced. Less than a week later, two weeks later, Congresswoman said, "I'm gonna have another hearing." And we had a hearing in February of 21, 21. Two months later, the Congresswoman led and had the bill voted out of committee, out of the Judiciary Committee meeting for the first time in its 30-year history. Major historic milestone. We thought at that time we would quickly move the bill to the floor for a full-house vote. We spent a tremendous amount of energy and time, meeting over 90 straight weeks over that period, trying to get this bill to the floor. We ended with 217 confirmed votes, we only need 218 to pass. We ended with 217 confirmed votes, but the leadership would not bring the bill to the floor. Even if they had brought it to the floor, we would have won at that level. But we knew, even with a Senate companion bill, we weren't gonna get the bill passed legislatively through Congress. You needed 60-vote filibuster proof majority in the Senate in order to have that bill pass. So all along, even though we were fighting and struggling, the national leadership, it was several organizations who were meeting these 90-plus weeks on a weekly basis with the Congresswomen, with the House Judiciary Staff. Even though we knew we weren't gonna get this legislation passed legislatively, we knew that we had to create, in the consciousness of white Americans, particularly the President, that the Democratic Political Party had the political will to pass this legislation. And we were able to demonstrate that with a Senate companion bill, Senate leaders signed on. But more important than that, and where we at now, we are, we have expanded this demonstration of political will for this legislation about what all of you are doing here in Evanston with the local reparations that you're doing all around the country. We are saying, and we're demonstrating to the Democratic Party, that this is something that American people want. And primarily, most of the legis, I haven't seen any of this legislation, as Robin stated, this is a partisan issue. I haven't seen any of this legislation proposed by a Republican anywhere in the country. So everywhere you see reparations being talked about, it's being talked about in the context of the Democratic Party. So this President knows that his, that his base desires reparatory justice. We have unintentionally, as Black people, amassed a tremendous amount of power in the Democratic Party. And I say unintentionally, because we didn't intend, after voting 60 years for the Democratic Party, to, we didn't start out saying, "One day, we're gonna be 20% of the Democratic Party base, we're gonna have this tremendous power." We didn't start out doing that, but that's where we are at today. We are 20% of this base. You look at, 61% of the Democratic bases is white, 20% is Black, 19% is all other people of color. That 20% has a tremendous amount of power if we leverage it. And right now, since we, we knew we were gonna have to pivot this bill to the President for an executive order, that's where we at now, and we have the power to do so. HR40, and he has on his desk now, an executive order that was written by the Chief Counsel of the Judiciary Committee, which basically says, "Establish an HR40-like commission." And there's people who are talking about, you know, HR40 is no good, you know, we hear that from some folks. Because they don't know what HR40 is designed to do. And as Jam stated, there's three periods of criminality in this country, three areas of criminality. So HR40 Commission is designed to look at the period of enslavement, study how that period of crimes continually impact all of us today, and then develop remedies to address the continued impact from enslavement-era crimes. Then it's to look at the second period, apartheid-era crimes, Jim Crow, the lynching that Dr. Malvoe talked about, and the impact those crimes have on current living Black folks. Some of us, our parents, are still living who experienced apartheid. And we know, I know, and interacting with my parents, I know they carry trauma. I know they carry pain, and how, you know, they chastise you, they pull out a stenching cord. I got a bunch of whips. Some of y'all know about them stenching cord beatings, they say, "I'm gonna beat you like you stole something," because that was passed down. Some of y'all know about that, maybe, maybe some, right. So I know, you know, we carry those, that impact. And we, and the HR40 Commission is designed to look at all of the impact of apartheid-era crimes, and then craft remedies, and also is to look at the current era crimes, war on drugs, mass incarceration, police terror, and determine that full impact, and then develop remedies to address that. So what HR40 is designed to do is create a master plan and redress for Black America. The California legislation, Dr. Shirley Weber, when she introduced her bill, she didn't start from scratch, she just took HR40 and said, "Let me put a California preamble to it, and everything else in the legislation, we're gonna put, and we're gonna get it passed in California." So the California bill, Jessica, uh, ties for us, first, the California bill is HR40 at the state level, word for word. Changed nothing, added one clause around eligibility, and a preamble as I stated for California. So we know the potential of this legislation, they just completed their work. 1,100-page document detailing the continued impact and harms, 14 areas of impact, and over 140 remedies. That is what's supposed to come out of HR40, and that is what has to come out of an executive order. And it's up to us to make that happen right now, and we have the power to do so. We started a campaign, the Earn My Vote, Earn the Black Vote Campaign, earntheblackvote.net. We asking everybody to go to that website. We gonna make Biden do it. He's not gonna do it unless we make him do it, and we have the power. I keep, I can't stress enough, my mantra is, we have the power. We have the power, but it has to be circulated and leveraged all around the country from these local spaces for us to make it happen. So HR40 by executive order now.
All right, okay. All right, now we got an interesting dilemma, because we're really at the end of our time. Because we're now supposed to have a block of time to, for, particularly for interaction with Robin, with, and I really want Robin to also, for our national audience and international audience, let people know how many people are here, how many initiatives. I mean, it's really incredible, I mean, in terms of the unique initiative, how many states, that kind of information. Folks who are at the symposium have already heard it, but our, our virtual audience has not heard that. So what I wanna do is a lightning round. A lightning round, well, you're supposed to get a minute each, but I'm gonna do a lightning round. I'm gonna pick one of the questions we have, just for a quick response, but then we wanna bring Robin up, and to hear from Robin, and then to have her interact in whatever way she chooses, you know, with the audience in that regard. And I do know that we're supposed to try to finish by 9:15 or thereabout, because there are some other activities that are going on, and I'm sure that would be appreciated if we're able to move in that direction. So I'm gonna go first, Sister Lolita, with just a quick comment on this issue of the impact. And you may have already touched on it, but I, I just don't think we can emphasize enough the impact of Evanston. I mean, like, have people in Jamaica heard about Evanston? Have people in the Caribbean heard about, it's that kind of thing, if you would give us a quick response, just in terms of what Evanston and the Evanston model means.
Well, thanks again, I think for us,
Speaking, we wanna make sure we hear you.
In relation to the Jamaican National Council, that we are studying Evanston as a model in terms of the legislative interventions that have taken place. One of the issues that we're also looking at has also to do with, for example, land distribution. How do you deal with health issues? I mentioned education, et cetera. And I'm sitting here, and I'm going to allow you to ask the other questions, but, you know, I'm, I'm again in this church, and I'm asking myself, you know, do unto others. You know, the Bible says, "Do unto others." And I also ask myself if we could step back in our own humanity and reflect on what the truths really are, that we have denied consistently, which is why reparations is so elusive for Black people. Because we have failed to recognize and to, to understand what it meant to remove people from different places, break them up, rip children away. I mean, we are watching this on the news right now, with children being killed, all, there was no difference. It's a different time, it's a different context, but it's the same thing. And if we could stop, all of us, regardless of our race, and look back, and then ask ourselves, do unto others, what, what, what is it that denies us the opportunity to step out and say, "I want to be counted in this call for reparation for people of African descent."
Thank you very much. Senator Sanders, so there are some people who say that focusing on Evanston and focusing on local reparations will be an impediment to national reparations. Can you give us a short answer in terms of what your response to those critics would be?
You get a refund from the Tax Department three different ways if you get a refund. One comes from the city, one comes from the state, one comes from the federal government. Your federal should not say that you don't get the state. The state shouldn't say that you shouldn't get the city. So those people who say that, I, I hear you, but I do not understand you. I want back pay.
All right, thank you very much. You may have already spoken to this, Dr. Fleming, but just tell us about the effort to get more of the Divine Nine and other civic organizations involved in the reparations movement. You've already talked about the impact that Evanston and Robin has had on, you know, Deltas and so forth, but can we expect more in terms of an expansive, inclusive outreach to other organizations, particularly the Divine Nine?
Well, thank you for asking the question. I would say formally, no, not yet, in my head, yes. But we have been speaking informally to leaders of other Divine Nine organizations in Atlanta. The structure of Divine Nine is such that every city or place has a panellitic council, and all of those, all of the leaders in any particular city kind of, or area, meet and have an agenda and discuss what everybody is doing. So that is a possibility of just locally. And of course, that is also in the state and the national. So there are ways that we communicate as organizations.
Thank you very much, being very good. Jessica Ann Mitchell. Let me get it here. Lost my place, lost my place, lost my place. Oh. A lot of times, in the Black community, but most importantly among white folks, they just think this is about a check. Them Negroes gonna get a check, you know what I mean? This is all this fear about us getting a check. I mean, so, talk to us a minute about this question, is reparations only about a check?
No. A check would be only the beginning. And even if it was the largest amount, we could imagine it still would never be enough for what our ancestors went through and for what we going through today. So there's various forms of reparatory justice. Yes, cash payments are one of them, but it also includes the possibility of repatriation or relocation. It also includes land reclamation for all those families that lost their land, driven from their land during Jim Crow. It also includes investments to Black communities. It also includes reparations for housing with redlining, as is happening here in Evanston. It also includes health and wellness. Cam had talked about the harm, and there was a report he worked on a couple of years ago, the harm is in our genes. And it's talking about the epigenetic harm that, that was passed from our ancestors, that instills sickness and other issues within our bodies today, so health and wellness would be a part of it. So reparations is more than just a check. It's really, like as Olufemi Tawu says, "A world-changing experience."
Thank you so much. Dr. Malvoe, when Robin stepped out, one of the things that she stepped out on, when she Malvo, when Robin stepped out, one of the things that she stepped out on was she recognized the tremendous wealth gap that had like is being done in Evanston. Will it in fact help to impact the wealth gap?
In many ways, of course it will, and in many ways, it's yet to be measured. But what we know is this, a home is the primary source of intergenerational wealth for most middle, moderate income people. Upper income people, of course, trips, stocks and bonds, blah, blah. But here's the thing about homeownership, nearly seventy percent of white people own their homes, less than forty-five percent of black people do. We lost homeownership during COVID. We lost homeownership during the two thousand eight recession. And so we, I mean, we had gotten up to about nearly forty-eight, and now we're back down to below like forty-four, forty-five. Now, those seem like tiny numbers, but they represent hundreds of millions of dollars in wealth. So to give people twenty-five thousand dollars, and I applaud the fact, initially, it was connected to housing, but now it's more general, people just get a check, which makes a lot of sense. But with the connection to housing, it really was an ability, as is the check, to begin to build intergenerational wealth, which is where black folks tend to lag the most. So when you look, Dr. D, at, as an example, our young people who are in college and university, we have almost twice the student loan debt that white folks have because almost forty percent of whites have no student loan debt. So if you look at the data that says it looks like about a five thousand dollar difference, when you take out all the white people that don't have any student loans, they're, less than ten percent of black people don't have student loans. So therefore, you're dealing with that. So, and the whole student loan piece is connected to the housing piece. I mean, so much is connected to the housing piece. So getting back to the housing piece, which is what Robin's legislation has done, is a way to effectively narrow the wealth. Now, that's not going to eliminate it, narrow the wealth gap. But I think over, let's say, ten years, and I'm sure they're doing this, there's just a brilliant people involved, let's see what happens. In ten years, let's see what happens. But right now, legislation just passed, first checks just cut, we're not gonna be able to measure it, but theoretically, we can say, if you're looking at housing, you're looking at narrowing the wealth gap.
Thank you so much. Cam, again, this is mostly for our national or international audience. There have been so many amazing informational resource sessions, but there was one this afternoon on slavery, slavery disclosure ordinances. I mean, it was like mind blowing. Because it means that this is a whole nother area that people can get involved in and at the local level and so forth. So again, a short one in terms of, and it's really, the question is, are there other areas that local reparations can take and initiatives can take place in terms of dealing with how to, again, repair the harm?
Almost definitely. So we talked about the slavery disclosure redress ordinance earlier today, and basically what it does is gives us another opportunity to seek out other resources that doesn't just come from the city. There are many, many offending parties to the harms that we've endured over the centuries in this country. Some of those parties are corporations, institutions, and prominent families that still exist today. And they should be contributing to the repair because they contributed to the harm. And there hasn't been any direct action toward bringing them into the repair of justice, reparatory justice framework since the early two thousands. So we teamed up with law firm and Howard University School of Law to craft a model piece of legislation that can be implemented across the country, whether you can implement it as a standalone piece of legislation, or you can implement it within your, your commission or task force. Illinois has the unique position that it's mandated to redress, to address, or to address these non-governmental complicit actors. We wrote the bill for Illinois, we listed sixteen repairative initiatives. When it went to the legislature, they settled on four. One of those four was the slavery disclosure redress ordinance. So that commission has a mandate to, 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 I'm sorry, the Illinois Commission, that you're the chair. Let me put it out, let me recognize you, grand brother. So, yeah, give him a hand, give him a hand. And so that commission, or the Illinois Commission, says that any, any company that wants to have a contract with the state of Illinois, whether it's insurance, railroad, and this is a railroad state, tons of railroads run through this, through Illinois, you know, the hub of the nation. And so all these corporations would have to, Dr. I'm gonna finish, all these corporations would have to research and disclose and contribute if Illinois adopts our, our model legislation to a fund that, that can be dispersed statewide for redress efforts.
All right, thank you very much. Let's have a big round of applause for the panel, big round of applause for our panel. So now I'd like to bring to the rostrum, Robin Rue Simmons.
Just want to report on what's happening at this symposium and let really our national and international audience know how the movement is in momentum. In two thousand twenty-one, NARC and First Repair convened our first symposium. It was much more intimate than it was this year, was held at my church, Faith Temple Church of God in Christ, also here in Evanston. There were less than fifty of us that convened in our fellowship hall. Last year, we had about seventy of us that met at the Orington, and this year, we had to close registration with a long list of folks still requesting to get in. We closed registration at two hundred participants. What is, yes, to that. What is incredible is that we represent twenty-six states here in the United States, and we represent seventy-six unique reparations initiatives. That's including task force, commissions, committees at a municipal level, at a state level, at an institutional level, grassroots initiatives for reparations. Reparations are on fire. I don't know where Nikichi is, but yes, indeed. There you are, Sister Nikichi. Reparations is on fire, and we are in momentum. And so we make up legislators, local policymakers, state elected leaders, clergy and laypeople, academics, grassroots leaders, allies from all backgrounds, and I'm sure academics, artists have shown up to the reparations movement. If you don't know about the folded map and Ms. Tanika Johnson, you need to know about her and her brilliance. Yes, here she is here. And so we will continue this work united. We will continue learning and sharing from one another. That is the key goal of this symposium, is not to learn from Evanston, maybe take some inspiration from Evanston, but we are learning from each other. We are learning from the great work that's happening in Tulsa, Oklahoma, and Kansas City, Kansas.
Asheville.
Asheville, North Carolina, yes, indeed. New York City, San Francisco, Decatur, Georgia, shout out Detroit, Michigan. Okay, tell me who you are. Okay, that's right. But we have so many colleges and universities that are present. We have Wake Forest, we have the great Howard Law School, the Third Group Marshall Civil Rights Center, we have Columbia University that is present, we had our own Professor Al Tillery from Northwestern University and his center for democracy and democracy. But we have had an incredible time, and we actually wrap up tomorrow with a live toolkit that will be really a list of practitioners, technical assistance providers, and national experts that have helped each of us. Many of them have supported Evanston, and many of them have supported other initiatives as well. And so we together will learn from the live toolkit. One thing that we're gonna do that's really exciting, we're going to get a visioning session with a incredible global group that supports small non-for-profits and visions like ours, and then we will conclude with a declaration. And so I just want to encourage those that have thought that maybe the reparations movement is stagnant, want to let you know that that is not the case. I think I heard someone shout out that the Illinois Task Force Chairperson is here. Is that? Oh, he just left? Okay. But know that even the state of Illinois is making great progress, and I hope that we do learn more about what's happening at the state as well. And our state, the state chairperson is here. Could you come here and be recognized, please? Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
The Illinois State Commission was established in two thousand twenty-one. We have been active for approximately one year now. We are in the process of finalizing our research team, a three-phase research process that will outline the history of harms here in Illinois, that will do some qualitative research collection with those who are of the impacted community, and then finally doing some quantitative analysis on the wealth gap here in Illinois. We are in that process. If you want to attend our meetings or learn more about the commission, you can go to Once again, my name is Marvin Slaughter. I am the chairperson of this commission. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Marvin, so much for your leadership, the great work that's gonna come out of the state of Illinois. Know that Representative Carolyn Amens is unable to be here, but she has sent her husband, where is he, Clerk Amens? He was here, and one of the staff members from the state. There will be a printout available at tomorrow's session to discuss more about reparations legislation that she's introducing in January. So please do follow NARC, follow First Repair to stay updated. If you want to stay updated on the facts of what's happening in Evansville, Illinois, follow cityofevanston.org backslash reparations and learn more. Our meetings are also public. You can join in virtually, they're hybrid. You can also come in person, they're at the Civic Center. Power to you.
All right, let's give it up for Robin Rue Simmons. Let's give it up for her. All right, Robin Rue Simmons, all right. All right, well, we've reached the point where we need to have a closing word. And to have that closing word, you heard an opening word. This is my pastor now, so I didn't adopt him. I'm gonna come over here for service, be an honorary member of the historic Seventh Baptist Church. Reverend Dr. Michael Neighbors, take us home.
We have learned so much, and as I sat there learning and drinking in all of the incredible wisdom and knowledge from these amazing folks from all around our country and from Jamaica, I recognize that we are also, as a people, as a black people, caught between a rock and a hard place. There is a sense of heightened anticipation and at the same time, the sobering reality of our history and what we still face. And I want to end with two quotes. I'm one of those folks that I'm able to trace my family on my mother's side back so far. And unfortunately, for many people of color in this country, we do not have that opportunity because the records were destroyed for one reason or another. But I want to go back for a moment and then read something for you and then end with a quote. My mother was born in Calamouz, Michigan in nineteen nineteen, Kathleen Neighbors. Her mother, Hilda Jones, was born in Goblesville, Michigan in eighteen eighty-eight. Her grandmother, which is my great-grandmother, Alice Scruggs, was born in Richmond, Indiana in eighteen sixty-eight. Her father, Isom Ampe, was born in Richmond, Indiana in eighteen forty-one. His father, James Ampe, was born in Virginia in seventeen ninety-three. And his father, Brighton Jones, was born in Virginia in seventeen sixty-five. I go back that far. In each of the wars in our country, my family fought in each of them, starting with the American Revolution. This is our country. This is where we are. In that story, my great-great-grandfather, Isom Ampe, fought in the Fifty-Fourth Infantry, Massachusetts, that was made famous by the movie Glory. He went there from Richmond, Indiana with his brother, Thomas. They both joined that infantry in February of eighteen sixty-three and fought at Fort Wagner in July of eighteen sixty-three. His brother, Thomas, was killed in that battle. He survived and moved to Michigan. So let me share this. He also had another brother, and his brother, his name was James, named after his son, after his father. And James was born in eighteen thirty-five. He remained in Richmond, Indiana, helping blacks from North Carolina who wanted to move to Indiana to find a home and to find employment. Indiana became very, well, may have always been racist, but it became particularly racist after the Civil War and after Reconstruction. This is a story about my great-great-grandfather's brother. It is just a small article from the Indianapolis News that I think you might find interesting, especially you, doctor. June thirtieth, eighteen eighty-five, he had been warned to stop helping blacks from North Carolina to move into Indiana. The dead body of James Ampe, who disappeared from Richmond on Friday, the nineteenth, was found yesterday afternoon nine miles north of that place. From appearances, Ampe had gone from a field in which he had been working, climbed a tree, fastening one end of a two-foot rope to a limb, hanging himself. He evidently remained hanging until the heavy rains rotted the rope and let him down. The history passed down through my family is that there is no way that James Ampe would have possibly have hung himself. That is a lynching. So you think about that, and it's sadness, right? It's like it makes you just angry, it makes you sad. And then you think of County Cullen, and you think of the great poet of the Harlem Renaissance, who said, I doubt not that God is good, well-meaning, and kind, and diddy stoop to quibble, could easily tell why a little buried mole continues blind, or flesh that mirrors his must someday die. Make plain the reason tortured chanteliers baited with the fickle fruit, or declare if merely brute caprice dooms Sisyphus to struggle up a never-ending stare. Inscrutable God's ways are, and immune to a mind too strewn with petty cares, to slightly understand what awful brain compels his awful hand. Yet do I marvel at this curious thing, for God to make reparation movers black and bid them sing. God has given you a song, so sing it from now on. God bless you and good night.
Well, that concludes the town hall meeting from Evanston, Illinois.